Take notice, this public meeting of the Servile Board of Education was faxed to the Home News Tribune according to Chapter 231 Public Law 1975. Further in accordance with NJSA 10:4-6 to 10:4-21, a copy of this notice is posted outside the secretary's office and also filed with the clerk of the borough of Servile. Please rise for the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands unafraid, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. DeAndrea, roll call please.
Mr. Balka?
Here.
Mrs. Backo?
Here.
Mrs. Bloom?
Here.
Mr. Brzezinski?
Here.
Mrs. DePinto?
Here.
Mr. McEnone?
Present.
Mrs. Strapp?
Here.
Mr. Walsh?
Here.
Mr. Syak?
Here. Mr. DeAndrea, if you could summarize what we discussed in executive, please. Are these on, by the way? Can you hear us? Okay. All right. Just checking.
In executive this evening, under negotiations, Saverville Education Association, Saverville Principals Association, a request for a pay differential. Student discipline, Hibb reports 2013-14, '23 through '24. Attorney-client privilege, tuition reimbursement, a conflict of interest under personnel, superintendent search, and agenda item for the dean of discipline.
Thank you, Mr. DeAndrea. We have a presentation this evening. As we talked about, every single school is focusing on reading and language arts, and we have a special presentation by Eisenhower Elementary on how reading inspires writing. I'd like to introduce the principal of Eisenhower School, Mr. Agles.
If I would've known you were going to introduce me, I would've stood much closer. A couple of months ago, Barnes &amp; Nobles, the schools participated in an activity at Barnes &amp; Noble. One of our teachers, Ms. Schwartz, along with some of our other teachers at Eisenhower, had a presentation for parents and the public there at Barnes &amp; Nobles, and they wanted to give you a look at what they did, for those of you who were unable to make it. Mrs. Schwartz?
Good evening, everyone. I'm very proud to introduce not only students from my class, but all of the third grade classes at Eisenhower School. We have been learning that reading inspires writing, and we have been using books as mentor texts in order to inspire us as authors. So tonight, the children are here to show you some of the mentor texts that we have been using to inspire us when we were writing our personal narratives. So, the third grade students of Eisenhower School.
This book is called "When I Was Young in the Mountains" by Cindy A. Violet. This book is an example of a narrative story because it is written using the word "I." Let me show you.
When I was young in the mountains, we walked across the cow pasture and through the woods, carrying our towels. The swimming hole was dark and muddy, and we sometimes saw snakes, but we jumped in anyway.
This book is called "Arthur Writes a Story" by Mark Brown. This book inspired us to use ideas from our own life for our stories. Let me show you why.
The title was "How I Got My Puppy Pal," said Arthur. Arthur told how proud he was of his pet business and how scared he was when Perky disappeared. And he told how happy he was to find her under his bed and how surprised he was to see her three puppies. And the best part is, said Arthur, "I got to keep one."
This book is called "Owl-Wound" by Jane Yellen. This book inspired us to write about small moments in our lives. Let me show you why.
We went into the woods. The shadows were the blackest things I had ever seen. They stained the white snow. My mouth felt furry, for the scarf over it was wet and warm. I didn't ask what kinds of things hid behind black trees in the middle of the night. When you go owling, you have to be brave.
This book is called "Hey Owl" by Arthur Yerings. It inspires us to write with a good beginning, like using a question. Let me show you why.
Owl, a nice man, a quiet man, a janitor, lived on one room on the west side with his faithful dog Eddie. They ate together, they worked together, they watched TV together. What could be bad?
This book is called "The Other Side" by Jacqueline Woodson. It inspired us to expand our story by using dialogue. Let me show you why.
I got close to the fence, and that girl asked me my name. Clover, I said. My name's Annie, she said. Annie Paul. I live over yonder, she said. By where you see the laundry? That's my boss hanging on the line. She smiled then. She had a pretty smile.
This book is called "Brave Irene" by William Stig. This book inspired us to write using exciting verbs. Let me show you why.
The wind wrestled her for the package, walloped it, twisted it, shook it, snatched at it, but Irene wouldn't yield. "It's my mother's work," she screamed. Then, "Oh, whoa!" The box was wrenched from her mangrass and bubbling along in the snow. Irene went after it.
This same book, Brave Irene, also inspired us to use, to, us to write using personification. That is when we give a non-living thing human qualities. Let me show you.
"Go home," the wind called. "Irene, go home! I'll do no such thing," she snapped. "No such thing, you wicked wind! Go ho, ho, ho!" The wind yodelled. "Go ho, ho, ho!" It shrieked, or else. For a short second, Irene wondered if she shouldn't heed the wind's warning. "Sweat, no, the gown had to get to the dudges."
This book is called "The Recess Queen" by Alex O'Neil. This book inspired us by using ana manapia, a word for sounds. Let me show you why.
She figured wrong. Katie Sue talked back, just as sassy-ath could be. She said, "How did you get so bossy?" Then that puny thing, that loony thing grabbed the ball and bounced away. Oh, Katie Sue is one quick kid. She bolted quick as lightning. Bouncity, bouncity, bounce. Kickity, kickity, kick. Swingity, swingity, swing.
This book is called "What You Know First" by Patricia McLachlan. This book inspires us to write our endings by talking about what we will remember. Let me show you why.
And I'll try hard to remember the songs and the sound of the rooster at dawn, and how soft the cows' ears are when you touch them, so the baby will know what he knew first.
This book is called "The Blizzard" by Betty Runwright. This book inspired us to write our endings by talking about how we feel. Let me show you why.
Billy turned his head enough to see past tall figure in the doorway. "I'm awake," he said, wishing you were July baby, I suppose, passed out with a little snort. Billy grinned into the darkness. "December's okay with me," he said, and then, even though he didn't want the day to end, he fell asleep.
So, thank you very much for your support in our presentation this evening, and please remember that to be an author, you first need to be a reader.
Reading, writing, writing.
Thank you very much.
Just quickly, this is just an example of some of the great things that are going on at Eisenhower School. I do want to give thanks, and I want, if they will indulge me, ask the parents to stand up, because not only did they bring their children out today, but these are the parents that are working to make sure our book fairs are successful. Anytime a teacher has an idea and doesn't have the funding for whatever idea they've come up with, the PTO works along with the teachers, as well as the parents, to make certain that we get things done. And I want to just have them acknowledged today here in public. So, parents, please stand up. And I know they're hiding and afraid that I'm going to point them out, but we do have some Eisenhower teachers sitting in the back, supporting their colleagues as well. So, thank you. And I thank the board for their indulgence this evening. Good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Agles, for a great program. I also want to apologize, I know initially when this program launched at the Barnes &amp; Noble Book Fair, we did a nice little highlight on the back of the calendar for the schools that were represented, and somehow Eisenhower missed the back of the calendar the first month, so we had to circle back and get you guys the second month. But thank you very much. As I said, all the schools are focusing on our theme of trying to drive reading and make reading important, and every single school is doing it in a very unique way, and I loved hearing about all the books that you guys read here today.
I know Dr. Alfano enjoyed the wind blowing. He was smiling the whole time.
We also think Dr. Alfano has a spot in the sound crew when he retires. Thank you very much.
While you're all welcome to stay for our board meeting, if you have homework to do,
you are also welcome to leave, and now would be a good time for you to do so. We will move on to approval of minutes. We have the minutes of the regular and executive session on March 18th. Can I have a motion that they be approved?
So moved.
By Mrs. DePinto?
Second.
Do I have a second? By Mr. Walsh. Are there any comments or corrections on the minutes? Hearing none, roll call on the minutes.
Mr. Balka?
Yes.
Mrs. Backo?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. Brzezinski?
Yes.
Mrs. DePinto?
Yes.
Mr. McEnone?
Yes.
Mrs. Strapp?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
And Mr. Syak?
Yes. Okay, our student rep is not here tonight. Parent Involvement Council, is there any report? Has there been a meeting since the last meeting?
No, but we have one coming up. Is it this Monday night?
It's next Monday night on April 7th, and the police chief and Detective Sprague will
be there to do a presentation on the drug molly. So that'll be next Monday, April 7th.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Seven o'clock in the library.
Seven o'clock here in the library. Everyone can still hear me, right? Because I don't sound like they're okay. District highlights. Mrs. DePinto?
Congratulations are in order for all of the Saverville DECA students from the Saverville War Memorial High School who competed at the New Jersey DECA State Conference from March 10th through 12th in Cherry Hill, New Jersey. Three students listed have won top honors in their chosen business and technical event areas and are now eligible to compete at the DECA International Career Development Conference in Atlanta, Georgia from May 2nd through 7th. Kaitlyn Classic, national qualifier, first-place winner in the event of Principles of Hospitality and Tourism, and first-place event test. Kathleen Fasulo, national qualifier, second-place winner in the event of Accounting Applications. Adriana Bella, national qualifier, third-place winner in the event of Accounting Applications, first-place event test, and second-place event role play. These other winners were top-10 finalists in their business and technical event areas but did not qualify for national competition. Megwin Quinlin, Paige Gallagher, Sharisti Beluar. Congratulations to these students that have worked very hard beyond this regular school day to prepare for these competitive events. Next stop, Atlanta, Georgia. Students from Saverville War Memorial High School, under the supervision of Ms. Laura Haney and Ms. Paula Schnorbus, will be going on a trip to Her World at DeVry. Her World is an interactive workshop that introduces young women to career opportunities in science, technology, engineering, and math. Through a series of games, hands-on projects, and live discussions with successful women from top companies in the local community, Her World inspires young women to use their talents and interests to succeed and how to best prepare for college. Congratulations to 130 students who participated in the NFL Play 60 Challenge and the teachers and staff members who helped the SUES to be one of the top four schools in the state to win a $2,000 grant. The school held two family fun and fitness nights to promote healthy living. The SUES Physical Education staff members, Ms. Papowski, Ms. Stracken, and Mr. Najjar, played theme nights and worked with community members to teach students and their families safe and fun activities. Ms. Shelley Jenkins and Ms. Margie Caro shared their knowledge of the school nutrition guidelines and worked with PTO members to share their delicious snacks and recipes to the families that attended these evenings. Thank you to all the students and staff for their efforts. Great job. And we have one more. This weekend, I attended, and I know so do many other people, the play at the high school, Into the Woods. What a wonderful performance put on by the Saverville War Memorial High School Theater Company, Mr. Kraft, Dr. Pacuro. It was a wonderful production, and those students definitely were taught that, yes, the show must go on.
Thank you, Mrs. DePinto. Dr. Alfano, we'll turn it over to you for your superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Syak. A, Buildings and Grounds, approve an amendment to the high school use of the buildings for the Stardust Program, as noted. Number two, Saverville High School Auditorium, to be used for the Indian Cultural Program on the date noted on number two. And number three, the last resolution, approve the amended use of the high school for a summer basketball camp. Any questions with that section? With none, moving to B. Approve the amendment for professional services contract for nursing services, for school nursing services, for from $30,000 to $50,000, because we need additional funds for the additional children. Approve the summer program with the Middlesex Regional Educational Service Commission, and that deals with numbers two, three, and, two and three. Number four is approve the contract for the Regional Services Commission for Shared Time Transition Program, which is saving us a significant amount of money by going through the commission. Also, another program, a contract with the MRESC in the educational cooperative pricing system, in the amount of $12,200. Authorize the business administrator to advertise for the bidding of the mechanical upgrades for the Aldit Elementary School and the roof replacement for the Truman Elementary School. Number eight is to approve St. Peter's University to provide a weekend seminar on April 12th through 26th for the K-5 teachers on the topic of reading. Number nine is a resolution for the approval of a grant in the amount for Harriet Truman Roof, in the amount of $576,720, as noted on number nine. Number 10 is also a resolution for the Aldit School for a security upgrade, as well as, if you look at numbers 12, 13, 14, and 15, those are all upgrades for Eisenhower, Security, Truman, SUES, and Wilson. On the next page, you'll also see for Aldit School, a mechanical upgrades in the amount of $194,603. So moving to page 13, any questions with that section?
I have a question. For all the grants, the dollar amount, is that the dollar amount of the cost of the total project, or just the grant amount?
That's just the grant amount.
Just the grant amount.
So that's what we're receiving, Mr. DeAndrea, right? And all those categories?
Well, those are the amounts that we approved. Our final amount will be based on the actual cost of the project.
Good job.
We will not get more than that number.
Good job, Mr. DeAndrea. That's a significant amount of money. Moving to C, Personnel Non-Certified. I have a resignation, a retroactive increase in salary. Transfer of Ms. Sandy Paul from Director of Technology, Chief Technical Officer and Coordinator of Technology and Infrastructure, starting July 1st. Professional Days is listed on number four, for those individuals that are non-certified. Transfer of Ms. Havens to Support Secretary and Accounts Payable to a payroll processor for the district, effective July 1st. And number seven is our upgrade to substitute list. Any questions with C?
I have a question, but back to the other section. The nurse contract that we're going from 30 to 50, is, why are we doing that? Is it more students, or what's the reason?
I'll defer to my colleague, Mr. Byrne, who's, I'm sure, has a very quick response.
Certainly. We have a number of different nursing services that we employ in the district, and we have found that due to the very nature of some of those, that we just were transferring funds to one that we're using where we're discontinuing another service that we had presently used.
Okay, so do we vote on discontinuing the service?
Well, we don't know, we don't want to do that yet.
Oh, okay.
Because we may have a student that would require those particular services, but we're just transferring money because of the fact that we need that particular account for that particular service.
Okay, moving to D, Personnel Certified.
Dr. Alfano? Mr. Balka?
C, number three, I'll be voting no on page 13.
I'm also going to be voting no on that same one.
Okay, moving to D, Personnel Certified. We have a resignation of a teacher, a pregnancy leave. Another transfer of Mr. Glock Malloy from Vice Principal to the Director of Special Projects Technology, effective July 1st. Some professional days is listed on pages 16, on page 16. Some new employees, just an extension, the first one is just an extension of her leave here, and the second is also an extension of individuals who are now coming back. Number six is an approval of the dean of discipline, and seven is, once again, and eight are approvals to our substitute list. Any questions with that section? With none, moving to E, Policy. There's no report. F, our Hibb report this month is '23 and '24. Final reading for, and there's no changes, other than, I think we were calling, instead of half-days, we're calling them, what, one-session days?
Instead of one-session days, we're calling them early, just a little days.
Yeah, so that's the only thing we really changed. So people got a little bit confused on that. So that's our second and final reading. We didn't mess around with the dates.
I was never sure what a one-session day was to begin with.
In the last school I was in, we used to call them that, but that's okay.
It's an Alfanoism.
It's an Alfanoism. Number three, on page 19, is to approve the following revisions to this year's calendar, 13-14, as noted in A, B, C, and D. And number four is to approve the following district calendar dates. Middle school promotion ceremony is the 23rd of June. High school graduation is the 24th. Last day for students is the 24th, and the last day for teachers is June 25th. Okay, obviously, this is subject to, God willing, no more snow. Number five, approve the following special services resolutions, as listed in A, B, C, and D. Any questions with that section? With, moving to G, Co-Curriculum. We have a bunch of stuff. Truman School's Family Reading Night is May 22nd. Aldit Beautification Days are May 17th and the 31st. The high school's having a karaoke night, which I can't make, but it's a little unfortunate, which is May 8th. The high school is also having a peer leadership fundraiser, swim-a-thon, to raise autism awareness at the Aquatic Center. And the Aldit Elementary School is also doing an autism awareness fair on the 26th of April, as well as the DECA students from the high school will be participating in the International Career Development Conference in Atlanta, as noted in number six. There's a change of date in the faculty-student basketball game. I believe it went from the 8th, and it's approved for now the 10th of April. The National Honor Society inductions for the high school and reception is April 9th. The spaghetti dinner is April 10th, from 5:30 to 9:00. Eisenhower is also doing a health fair on April 10th. The high school is having its induction of the Spanish Honor Society on April 23rd. Any questions with that section? With none, moving to H, Support Services. Wave transportation is noted. Some changes of routes is noted in number two. Board buses for the youngsters for orientation from the various elementary schools to the UES is noted, and six trips, as listed, from A, B, C, D, E, and F on pages 23 and 24. That concludes my report.
Okay, any board member questions on the superintendent's report? Okay, hearing none, we'll open it up for public. On any item that is on the agenda, please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. If you wish not to be photographed, please let us know. Okay, hearing none, we'll close public. Can I have a motion to approve the superintendent's report?
So moved.
By Mrs. Bloom, do I have a second?
Second.
By Mrs. Strapp, any comments or discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Mr. Balka?
Yes, except item noted.
Mrs. Backo?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. Brzezinski?
Yes.
Mrs. DePinto?
Yes.
Mr. McEnone?
Yes.
Mrs. Strapp?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
And Mr. Syak? Yes. Delegate to New Jersey School Boards, three items. First of all, there is a program coming up on April 10th, dealing with special education. And, Mr. Byrne, you might be interested in this. It was actually a report that was commissioned by the New Jersey School Boards Association, looking specifically at special education practices in New Jersey, opportunities for cost savings, opportunities to recognize that special education is not a place, it is a service. It's a service that we offer with the intent of mainstreaming these students that who can be mainstreamed as quickly as possible. That is going to be held in South Brunswick High School on April 10th, if you're interested in attending. The other piece that I wanted to share is, we've got our national conference coming up this weekend. The National School Boards Association Delegate Assembly will be taking up the issue of the Common Core and adopting a policy position for our organization on the Common Core. So I'm interested in how that dialogue's going to go. When you look at the 50 states coming together, especially with Indiana just pulling out of it, I'm expecting a very robust dialogue, and I'm not exactly sure what we're going to end up agreeing on, but it should be a very good dialogue as we go through it. And then the final piece is, I have an order in for all of you and for anyone from the public who would like one. I mentioned a couple meetings ago about the stand-up for public schools campaign that NSBA is running, along with the website. I have the red wristbands. If you would like one, please take one, and then if anyone from the public would like one, please come up after the meeting, we'll get you a wristband so you can stand up for great public schools. And that concludes my report. Committee reports. Any committees meet?
The DIAC committee met.
Okay.
The DIAC committee met on March 27th, myself and Marilyn, along with some of the SCIP members, the School Improvement Panel members, from some of the schools. We discussed the...
I'm getting signs from the back that go like this. Yeah.
The DIAC committee is the District Evaluation Advisory Committee. They are a group put together from all the schools. We met on March 27th, along with some of the SCIP members, which is the School Improvement Panel members. They are also members from the schools. We discussed preliminary data from the completed observations. From that discussion came very productive conversation, which included what would be done if a teacher's score was close to the 2.65, that being an ineffective teacher. However, the final score would not be calculated yet, due to the SGP's not being in yet. This leaves much anxiety for the teachers as to when and if caps would be put in. Marilyn was going to survey other districts to see what they were doing. There was then discussion on the due date of SGOs. The original due date was May 5th. The original due date was May 15th, but it was pushed back in the elementary schools due to the testing being in there, so we pushed it back to May 30th. There seemed to be some inconsistencies as to the due dates. There seemed to be a five-week difference from the original date, and we were wondering if that, if the difference in the dates then would help the teachers, being that there was five weeks in there. You know, there's never been a time that education has gone through so much of a change, and as a board, I think we need to have consistency and training to help our teachers feel at ease.
Okay, thank you. Any questions on the report? I think the opportunity there, too, is, you know, maybe as we approach the next school year in July or August, if we can get, as a board, a framework in terms of what this is going to look like, because I know that the state is rolling this thing out, they're late to the game, and it's creating some challenges for us.
And that is the plan. We had originally told the teachers back in September that we anticipated around May 15th for a due date for the SGOs. So, and apparently, you know, we've got it out there, and we've told the teachers anywhere between May 1st and May 22nd would be acceptable. We did allow the elementaries to go till May 30th, because they're going to be testing right in the middle of May, so we didn't want to add that to them. So, but certainly, next year, everything's going to be moved up with the due dates for the original SGOs to be submitted. So, I anticipate, after having gone through it for a year, I think it's going to run a lot more smoothly next year.
Right, I think this year, the problem is, it's the first year. I think we just have to be a little lenient on a lot of things, because it's just, it's the first year, nobody knows. Even the state doesn't know. They keep changing them up.
Right, there's a lot of questions, and a lot of uncertainty on all ends, so, but we're trying to work it all out, and I'm sure it'll be much smoother next year.
And for the benefit of the non-educators and the public, the alphabet soup that we're talking about up here is the new Teach NJ, Teacher Accountability Act, that basically is requiring a higher level of evaluations of teachers, more frequent evaluations of teachers, also with a link to specific SGOs or student growth objectives, where basically you're defining upfront what students are expected to learn over the course of a school year, how much they're expected to progress, and then you're assessing teachers on whether or not they've made it. And obviously, that's, you know, brand-new for everyone, it creates a lot of anxiety, and you couple that with, you know, some moving targets from the state in terms of exactly when the assessments will be, or when the assessment will be struck, what it will look like, and how it will factor in, coupled with the fact that I don't even think some of the data that we need is going to come until September. It creates October.
January.
Oh, January.
January.
It's getting pushed out even further.
Right.
So, it creates a lot of anxiety and confusion that we're trying to work through here.
And just so you know, the student growth objectives, the SGOs, are designed by the teachers. So, that's not something that's coming down from above on them, that's something that the teachers get to set their own objectives, along with input approval from the administration.
Okay, any other questions from the board on this?
I have one, and I don't want to get too technical with the questions. You said, a score of a two...
4.65.
Is considered effective? Okay. And anything lower than that is considered ineffective by the state?
Yes.
Okay. And, right, right, right. I understand that. So, then, if a teacher received below that, there would be a corrective action plan?
Right.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion? Any other committee reports? The only one that I will highlight is the superintendent search, and there's not a committee for that, that's being run by the full board. We had our public information sessions, there was one scheduled for, actually, two scheduled for the faculty yesterday, and then also one for the community at night. There were about 20 to 30 people who came out to each one. Feedback that I've gotten thus far is positive. I think it was announced by Gwen last night, but if you're wondering why the board was not there, we were specifically asked to stay away from that meeting, so that we could get a true barometer, and no one would feel intimidated to speak up, whether you're a member of the faculty, or you're a member of the community. I understand that that did not exactly happen flawlessly at the evening meeting, and that was due to a miscommunication. Unfortunately, Mrs. Bloom was not here when Gwen gave the initial presentation, and she has not been part of the superintendent's search, because her son works in the district, so she has not been part of our executive sessions, and was not aware of that information, and didn't read my highlights until after the meeting. But again, that's why we were not there, I just wanted to make sure that that was clear. In speaking with Gwen Thornton, who's the field rep, we have had 51 people pick up applications, and thus far, 21 have returned. So, all indications are that we have a strong, or will have a strong pool. The application deadline is April 10th. If you are unable to attend either of the meetings and still wish to offer input, there are links on our website that you can go to, and you can answer some of the same questions that were asked at those meetings, and that will go directly to the consultant, who will consolidate all that information for us. Okay? Moving on to discussion. We've got an item under Vision 2030, discussion of the scope and demographic impact of the point. I was speaking with Councilman Art Rittenhouse regarding the point, and he is the designated to SARAH from the council, and he approached SARAH, and SARAH is willing to have Mr. O'Neill actually come to the board and present to the board what the point's going to look like, any information they know, any demographic impact that they know, timelines, et cetera. I didn't want to set that up without checking with the board first. If the board is open to having Mr. O'Neill come in, we can make that arrangement.
Are you talking about Mr. O'Neill, or the executive person of SARAH? Mr. O'Neill is the developer.
I was told Mr. O'Neill, but we were told to make contact with the executive director of SARAH.
So, she's the developer, he's the one that's developing the project?
In the email, it indicated Mr. O'Neill. I mean, if you'd like to have both of them, we could send a request for both.
What's your thought, Mr. McEnown?
My thought is, they're building 2,000 residences. There's no sugar coating for that, they're building 2,000 residences.
Again, and that's why I didn't schedule it, it's up to the board. If you don't want them to come in, if you'd rather they meet with our Facilities Committee, we could do that.
No, I think it's good that they come, that so the other board members could ask those questions. I mean, I deal with those guys on the planning board, but for them to come here, and even the public has an opportunity to ask them questions, so I would support them coming.
Okay.
But understand, that's a developer, so he's developing the project.
Correct. Any other questions, comments? Anyone opposed?
No.
Okay, then we will contact Mr., the executive director of SARAH, and make the necessary interest. Okay? Item number two, Appointment of Representative to the Middlesex Regional Lead Services Commission. Dr. Alfano, by virtue of his retirement, is stepping down from that organization. There are two meetings left of the year. They meet during the day, they're April 25th and June 6th. Although, Dr. Alfano will be there as a member of the public, because he seems to have an interest in this. Interest in terms of, not financial interest, interest in terms of curiosity. I'd like to have someone from the board also, you know, be there to actually vote and represent. Is there any interest from a board member who wishes to participate?
I nominate Mr. Syak.
Gee, thank you. Any other interest?
It's a Friday, it's a Friday morning at 8:30. It's once, I think it's, it's April, whatever that Friday is, 25th, whatever that Friday is, right around there, and there's June 6th. Those are the only two left.
I think those are our board leadership positions, should represent us.
I can certainly do that, if the board wishes.
Doesn't anybody have, like, a job coming?
It's only two meetings, we're not talking a whole year, so, we should be okay. And it's not at the end of the quarter, so...
Okay, and if you can't make it up?
Okay. All right, very good. I think we need a resolution for that, so, Mr. DeAndrea, if you would draw up the resolution. Isn't there a resolution that we have to pass? Yes.
We'll find it, we'll find it for the next meeting.
Perfect, for the 15th.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. That worked so well.
Anything I can do to help?
Any other items for discussion? Okay, hearing none, we'll open it up to public. If you wish to speak, please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. If you wish not to be photographed, please let us know. Hearing none, we'll close public, and I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Adjourn, watch Yankee.
A motion by Mr. McEnown, or a second?
Second.
By Mrs. Bloom, all in favor? Aye, opposed, carried.
Mr. McEnown, can you get that? Thank you, thank you.